Hi, this is the Town Council Regular Session. The date is March 26, 2014. The time is 7:30. I can hardly see it, 7:30. So, shall we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Aye. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call.
Council Vice President McAtee.
Here.
Councilman Donnelly.
Here.
Councilwoman Haley.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
Four members present. Council President Whaley is absent.
So, we have approval of the minutes of the previous meetings. We have work sessions on February 27th, March 3rd, March 4th, March 5th, and March 10th, 2014. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I make a motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and second, all in favor. Aye opposed. Motion carries four zero. We have the approval of the minutes of the previous regular session of March 10th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and second, all in favor. Aye opposed. We have carries four zero. We have the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody would like removed from the consent agenda?
Seeing none then, I move approval of tonight's consent agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second, all in favor. Aye opposed. We have motion carries four zero. Now, number 6A is licenses. This is a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to conduct the Mr. P.'s Run for Education. 5K Road Race on Saturday, May 24th, 2014, at 11:00 a.m. to the James P. Provençal Memorial Scholarship Fund, subject to the execution of a Hold Harmless Agreement indemnifying the town, issuance of a certificate of insurance naming the town as an additional insured in the amount specified by the risk manager, approval by the Town Traffic and Transportation Review Committee, and approval by Rhode Island Department of Transportation. Application by Amelia M. Provençal, Director of 65 Sweet Island Farm Road Wakefield, Rhode Island. And this is a new license. Is Amelia here?
Yes.
Would you come forward, please? Hi.
Hi.
And can you state your name, Amelia?
Amelia Provençal.
And can you tell us something about the race?
Yep. My husband, Jim, tragically died last May. He was an educator here in South Kingstown, and I've formed a memorial scholarship fund in his name and would like, as one of the fundraising events that I have planned, I'd like to conduct this race at URI, which is where we both met and graduated from.
And have you done this before, this race?
I have not.
Okay. And do you know, anybody have any questions? Sorry. I'm doing all the talking.
Can you give us some of the route around the university?
Yes. I included that with the application. I don't have it in front of me, I'm sorry about that. But it basically goes from Flag Road, down and around near the gyms, comes back up, and concludes back at Flag Road. Again, I don't have it in front of me.
No, but it is a verified 5K for runners.
Yes. It was already certified and used at the campus for another race.
Okay, good. Okay, good, good. All right, thank you.
Goes from Flag Road onto Old North Road, down Bill's Road, onto Lippett, to Taft, goes around on Beard Butterfield, and then down Alumni to get down to town.
Okay. Thank you, Steve.
How many runners and folks do you plan to, hope to have?
Hope to have around 100. Between the fact that, again, he was a teacher here in South Kingstown, the fact that I'm holding it on the campus where we were both alumni, I'm hoping to get a good, you know, a good number, around 100.
Are you going to have walkers also?
Yes.
And how much is the donation to enter the race?
We were going to do $20 by a certain date. I haven't decided on that cutoff yet. And then 25, maybe the week before, up to the day of the race.
Any other questions here at the table? Do I have a motion?
Seeing none then, I move that we approve License A.
Second?
Second that.
We have a motion and second, all in favor. Aye opposed, zero. Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Yeah, good luck.
That brings us to Communication, which is 7C. These are resolutions adopted on May 11th, 2014 by the South Kingstown School Committee in opposition to mandatory teacher contract continuation legislation, in support of legislation to extend the teacher layoff notice deadline from March 1st to June 1st, requesting the Rhode Island Department of Education to provide level funding of group home aid, in support of legislation to allow school committees to utilize bus monitors at their discretion, and in support of repealing the straight party vote option, are received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs. I think we wanted to go through these one resolution at a time.
I agree.
We have the resolution of the South Kingstown School Committee on Contract Continuation. Do we have a motion regarding that one?
I certainly move approval of that. We've been very consistent over the years with the Town Council's support of the school committee.
And I agree. I second that. We have a motion and second, all in favor. Aye opposed, zero. Motion carries four zero. And Del, on all of these, if you could get the bill numbers, we'd appreciate that. The second one is South Kingstown School Committee Resolution on Layoff Notification Date, which would bring the deadline from March 1st to June 1st. Do we have a motion on that one?
Well, I think we've supported that before, and I guess I thought the General Assembly had already moved on that, or am I incorrect on that? But I think we can certainly support this later date with the layoff notice.
I'll second that.
I don't, I'm not sure that they have, Jim.
Okay.
I think it's been reviewed, one house made, but I think that it's still, is subject to.
Okay. Okay. All right. So anyway, I guess, yeah.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor. Aye opposed. Motion carries four zero. The next resolution of the South Kingstown School Committee is relative to group home aid. Do we have a motion?
Well, I'll certainly move approval of this resolution, and it's one that we keep a constant eye on, Steve. I know this, I know the school committee's never been happy with the costs that we get back from the state on this. I know our costs are well in excess, but this one, we've got to keep alive for revenue purposes, so I'm happy to propose a motion to agree to the school committee here.
Second. Yes. Educating group home students is a significant expense for the South Kingstown School Department. We have a motion and second, all in favor. Aye opposed. Motion carries four zero. We have a resolution of the South Kingstown School Committee relative to bus monitors. Do I have a motion on this one?
I would also like to approve and join the school committee with the motion to approve the resolution that they forwarded. You know, in a country town like ours, I guess I'd rather have the school committee make those decisions, just where the monitors are needed, where they're not needed.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second, all in favor. Aye opposed. Motion carries four zero. The resolution of the South Kingstown School Committee to eliminate straight party vote.
I know we've been consistent before we filed this. I know this issue comes up before the General Assembly every year, and I would ask that we place this on file.
One second.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and second, all in favor. Aye. Motion carries four zero. That brings us to Communication 7E. These are resolutions adopted March 12th, 2014 by the Burrerville Town Council in support of Senate Bill S. 2135 and House Bills H. 7095 and H. 7580 relative to Common Core mandates and standards and the protection of personal family information, in opposition to Senate Bill S. 2411 and House Bills H. 7464 and H. 7465 relative to binding arbitration and contact, contract continuation, in support of House Bills H. 7501 and H. 7502 relative to interest on judgments in courts and civil procedures, and in support of House Bill H. 7291 relative to school housing project costs are received, placed on file, and the Town Council further directs.
Over my years here in the council, I've got to tell you Burrerville really does it right. Personally, I'm just very much in support of the supporting resolutions that they sent to us, and I agree with their opposition in resolutions that were sent to us. And maybe Steve could just mention quickly here the school housing project cost issue that could be very costly to the town, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Steve.
The existing state statutes provide interest payments may only be included in project costs provided that the bonds for those projects have been issued through the Rhode Island Health, Education, and Building Corporation. The Rhode Island Health, Education, and Building Corporation provides bonding services for all types of projects that require bond service for both the state and on behalf of hospitals and on behalf of municipalities. The objective here is to try to balance out any of the large bond issues that they issue with creditworthy communities that will lower the interest rate and minimize what the expense would be for those communities with lesser bond ratings. Communities with a high bond rating, such as South Kingstown, would in fact potentially spend more on the borrow cost of interest by going through the corporation rather than if they were to issue bonds through the municipality itself. The other issue that municipalities with good bond ratings have as a concern is that other municipal projects outside of the school purposes may be bonds that would be going to market at the same time, which would mean that the cost of bond preparation and administration of the bond sale would be higher if there was a lesser total bond amount. So essentially, you would have the state issuing bonds on the municipality's behalf for school projects, but still have a municipal bond that would be necessary for projects that were not eligible for the Rhode Island Health, Education, and Building Corporation. So what the objective here is to say to the state, change the law so that a municipality has the freedom to be able to issue bonds on their own or to go through the state bonding agency, whichever is in their best interest. And that's solely what it does here. I think the state's objective was to try to reduce the overall cost of interest by being able to blend both good risk and bad risk into one bond issue.
Thank you.
So, do we want to support Burrerville's resolution in support of House Bill 2014? No. House Bill H. 7291. Do we want to support that?
I certainly do.
Okay, make a motion.
Oh, well, all right. Then I make a motion then to resolution in support of House Bill 2014 from the town of Burrerville.
No, it's H. 7291.
H., I'm sorry, H. 7291, in support of the House resolution from Burrerville.
Second that.
We have a motion and second, all in favor. Aye. Motion carries four zero. Now, the other Burrerville Town Council resolution, which is opposing House Bill 7464 and House Bill 7465 relating to labor and labor relations, and they're also opposing Senate 2411, which is also relating to labor and labor relations. We have consistently joined them, and I believe we just joined the South Kingstown School Committee in joining them on the opposition to these bills. So, do I have a motion on what we want to do on those two?
I would certainly like to make a motion then opposing this bill in concert with the South Kingstown School Committee.
So, that's, do a second?
I second that.
All right. So we're opposing House Bill 7464 and House Bill 7465, and we're opposing Senate Bill 2411. We have a motion and a second, all in favor. Aye opposed. Motion carries four zero. That brings us to the resolution supporting Senate Bill 2135, which is relating to a one-year delay in implementation and the formation of a task force to study the Common Core mandates and standards, also the protecting of personal family information and the dissemination of data outside the districts. I mean, it looks like they're supporting, a delay is what they're supporting, right, Steve? They're supporting a delay in this whole process.
What they're asking is for the state not to take action for Common Core and instead to set up a committee to review it, to provide a recommendation, and to delay any action on Common Core mandates for the, for the next year. One of the main concerns that's expressed here is that there is a great deal of personal data collected for the children and families, and the question is how that information could be used and by whom. So I think those are the issues that they're asking for, the delay. They haven't taken a position, from what I can understand in Burrerville, against it. What they've said is that they have concerns, that they want explored in advance of a state action establishing Common Core mandates.
But these, the Senate Bill and the House Bill, they both asked for a one-year delay, do they not?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, these bills, we're also asking for, so we're all asking for a delay. Nobody would want this right away without knowing what the ramifications of it would be.
That's correct.
So, I think we should support these also. I mean, that's, who wants to make a motion on these? That's what I think, we should support them, because, you know, that's, that kind of information is private, and people don't want it distributed randomly.
Okay. All right, then I'd be happy to make a motion then, supporting the one-year delay at the resolutions that were received from the town of Burrerville regarding S. 2135 and House Bill, I'm sorry, Carol, what are the House Bill numbers here? Oh, there we are. House Bill 7095 and 7580.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. Aye opposed. Motion carries four zero. So, is that it?
Yep.
Oh, there's one more. The Burrerville Town Council Resolution supporting House Bill 7501 and House Bill 7502 relating to courts and civil procedure. This is about interest on judgments. We discussed this at the work session.
I think we should file it.
We have a motion to file it? Is there a second?
I can second that. I can second that.
We have a motion and second, all in favor. Aye opposed. Motion carries four zero. So, now we're on to comments from interested citizens. Anybody out there tonight that wants to take the podium? No? No takers? Go ahead, Mike. Okay, so, seeing none.
I actually have something to say.
Well, then you go for it.
I would like to thank Andy Nada for all his good work in his last week, and best of luck in Jamestown.
Where is he? There he is. That comes from all of us, Andy. Thank you, Paul, for bringing that up. Good luck to you.
Absolutely, Andy. Good luck to you.
Anybody else? No. Okay. So now we're on Town Managers Report.
As usual, Paul, you stole my thunder.
Ah.
But I did want to take the time to recognize that this is Andy's last meeting with us.
Oh, I'm going to miss you.
Now, Andy has served as our Recreation Director, then dealt with us as the Leisure Services Director, and then took over the role on Bruce's departure to take over as our Director of Administrative Services, and has been involved with most of our municipal groups, whether it be Chamber, Downtown Group, Peasdale Group, has also worked tirelessly as far as the grants that he's been able to get for the, for us in both recreation area and public service areas, and has been a great assistance in terms of the emergency management issues that we've had to deal with. So I want to wish him just all the best, and hopefully he can really enjoy his, his role in Jamestown, and I know he's going to be successful. So, I want to publicly thank him for all of the work he's done for us.
Very good.
Very nice.
Thank you, Andy.
But you're not done until Friday at 4:30.
So get back to work, right? Get back to work. The honeymoon's over.
Oh, God.
Actually, he doesn't start till Monday, so I still probably have him for the weekend.
Oh, boy.
He's going to go in running.
So, Mike, that's you now. Town Solicitors Report.
Yeah. I'll have some things to share with you at your session.
Okay.
Thank you.
And there's no appointments tonight, so that brings us to New Business. That's 12A. This is a resolution authorizing an award of bid to Atlas Pyro Vision Productions, PO Box 498, Jaffe, New Hampshire, for the 2014 Fourth of July Fireworks Display, in accordance with all bidding specifications, in an amount not to exceed $17,900, and as further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager dated March 20th, 2014, and entitled Recommendation for Bid Award, Fourth of July Fireworks Display.
The town received two bids, one from Atlas and one from Pyrotechnico. The lowest numerical bid was from Pyro at $17,500. The bid from Atlas was at $17,009. The most qualified bidder is Atlas for the award. Our recommendation would be to award to Atlas based on the number of shells that will be used in the display and the size of the shells. On page two of the memorandum provided by the Leisure Services Director, it's noted that the first company was offering 1,256 shells within the program where Atlas was listing at 1,541. The sheer size of the shells, six inches as an illustration, Pyrotech was offering 80 to 167 being offered by Atlantic, Atlas. I'd also note that Atlas has served the community in 17 of the last 18 displays that the community has had, and we have certainly see them as well-qualified and would wholeheartedly recommend award to Atlas again this year.
Well, we certainly need the largest amount of shells possible, let's face it. We can't go down from last year.
I certainly concur. Folks are there to wake up and enjoy the evening, not to be put to sleep, so.
I'll make a motion that we pass New Business, Item A.
Second.
We have a motion and second, all in favor. Aye opposed. Motion carries four zero. The next new business item is B, a resolution authorizing an award of contract to Granger Industrial Supply, 78 Jefferson Boulevard, Warwick, Rhode Island, MSC Industrial Supply Company, 75 Max's Road, Melville, New York, and Fascinal Company, 2001 Thorough Boulevard, Winona.
Minnesota.
Minnesota, okay. No. For industrial equipment and supplies based on the State of Rhode Island Master Price Agreement Number 348 for the period ending February 28th, 2017, and to further extend until a new bid is processed and awarded by the state, as further described in the memorandum from the Financial Controller to the Town Manager dated March 18th, 2014, and entitled Bid Recommendation, Industrial Equipment and Supplies. Steve?
Each year, or every three years, the state goes out for a master price agreement for the purchase of industrial equipment and supplies. The three companies that submitted proposals to the state and were accepted by the state are listed on your agenda this evening. Our recommendation is for council authorization to be able to use those three services for the purchase of the industrial equipment and supplies that we need in the various departments of the town. In this award, we will still have the opportunity to take the discounts presented in the proposals submitted under the master price agreement, or if we can find prices that are less, we are not under any obligation to purchase from one of the three companies. So, we've got the best of all worlds. However, a good deal of our purchases do go through this master price agreement, so it's important for us to have council recognition that we will be buying through those services. Recommend council award as presented on the agenda this evening.
I make a motion. Oh, go ahead, Meg.
No, if there's no questions. If there's no questions, I make a motion that we approve Item 12B, as suggested, and everybody get a second.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. Aye opposed. Motion carries four zero. That brings us to New Business, Item C. A resolution authorizing an award of bid to South County Umpires Association for umpire services for the adult softball program through November 30th, 2014, in accordance with all bidding specifications, in an amount not to exceed $25,000, and as further described in a memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager dated March 19th, 2014, and entitled Recommendation for Bid Award, Umpire Services. Steve?
The recommendation provided to the council through the Director of Leisure Services on behalf of Recreation Commission is to award the bid to South County Umpires Association. It's noted for the record that this is not the least expensive of the proposals submitted. Three proposals were submitted for this contract award. One of the three provided no references or proof of adequate pool of certified officials and therefore was disqualified from bidding consideration. The other two, Southern Rhode Island and South County, both had appropriate bids. The difference was that the Southern Rhode Island, which had the lowest price, which is approximately, which would be $6 per game cheaper for the two umpires that would be used in each game, would, is registered with the USSA rather than the ASA, and our program has probably for the last 25 years been an ASA-certified program. Southern Rhode Island has indicated that they can umpire our games under the ASA rulebook rather than using the USSA standards. However, the Rec Commission and Director are uncomfortable with this. The original bid was sought, was a two-year period. In my review of it, my recommendation was that if the bid was going to be awarded to other than the lowest numerical bid, that I would want to see that as a one-year contract. The reason I wanted this one-year contract is I would like the Leisure Services Director, in concert with the Recreation Commission, to meet with the softball advisory committee as to what the implications would be if there were change made in umpiring associations. This is the first contract let by the town. In the past, the town has just simply purchased services through the South County Umpires Association. The South County Umpires Association has worked with us for many years. Before we sever that relationship, I would like to, I agree with Terry that we should go. that relationship, I would like to, I agree with Terry that we should go one additional year, but exercise due diligence in reviewing as to what the implications would be for change, and then bring this back to the council for further consideration for the next season. The other concern that I have is that we're looking at the season beginning in mid-April, and at this point, the teams are already registering for the program. With 440 games, the differential in price is around $2,640 with a $6 spread. I believe that that dollar amount is not significant in terms of the value of the registration fees associated with each of the teams that register for that program. If in fact we can reduce those fees in a future year, once we've had a chance to review program impacts associated with changing umpire services, we can look at where we go from there. But at this point, I'm supportive of the recommendation from the Commission and through Terry to remain with South County Umpire Association for the 2014 year.
Steve, how long have we used the South County Umpires Association?
I don't, I believe that there's never been any, anything other than a negotiation with them as to what fees would be. It's never been put out for public contract consideration in the past, to my knowledge. Probably well in excess of 25 years, 30 years, Andy?
And most of the umpires are local residents? Of the South County Umpire League, they're more local residents. They're not coming from, you know, upstate or something like that.
That's correct. The majority of the South County Umpires Association are South Kingstown residents.
So basically, the money's staying in the town.
Correct.
For them to spend that Five Guys, or something like that.
Good point. And that's in your recommendation, too.
Very good point. Yeah. I'd like to make a motion that we approve New Business, Item C.
I'll second that, but I had one more question for Terry, if we could, before we vote. Are we filled with teams? How does it look for the spring/summer in terms of leagues? Or is there space left? Or is everything spoken for in terms of time?
At this point, we're, we've opened it up to new teams. We give a deadline for teams who are returning for registration. That deadline came and went, and now we're taking, we have very few spots for any new teams. The past four years, the league has filled, and we've had teams shut out. We just don't have this, you know, the space.
Thank you. Good news. Okay. Well, I did second that, Pauls.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? No one, so it passes 4-0. That brings us to the end of the agenda, and we're going into executive session, so. Thank you all for coming.
Make a motion to adjourn the regular session.
Second?